I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 8th, 2013 Williamson County Commission. First order of business is our invocation and pledge, invocation by Commissioner Dwight Jones and pledge by Commissioner Bert Shalafant. Please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, thank you, God, for this beautiful day when we can come together and make decisions about this wonderful county in which we have been blessed to live in. Help this commission to make decisions that are best for the people of Williamson County. God, we ask you to continue guidance and blessings over this county. God, we ask you at this time to keep all of our troops safe and bring those home who are overseas as soon as possible. We ask all things in your name, Christ most precious and holy name, we pray, amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have roll call. If you're present, push your yes button and confirm. Record the roll, Ms. Anderson. Very good.
Twenty-four present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular June 10th, 2013 County Commission meeting, and the copies will mail to each member. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Little, Commissioner Wilson II. Any additions? I see none. If you're in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have the introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. The copies will mail to each commissioner. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Dwight Jones II. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They pass unanimously. Citizens communication? We have no citizens communication, so moving on. Communications and messages. We have a proclamation. Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Jones, I believe.
We have a proclamation honoring Judge Kelly, which to me, this man has worn many hats. He's been Judge Kelly, Mr. Kelly, Coach Kelly, and he's been a very important part of our community. And let me read this proclamation. Whereas born and raised in Murray County, Tennessee, Wilburn H. Kelly, Jr. has resided in Williamson County since 1957, where he started his teaching career at College Grove High School, and whereas Mr. Kelly continued his teaching career at West High School in 1958, where he also served as coach for both the boys' and girls' basketball teams, and led the girls' team to the school's first district championship in any sport in 1960. And whereas Mr. Kelly later served as principal at Fairview Elementary School from 1967 to 1974, during which time he entered local politics and served on the county court of Williamson County from October 1972 to July of 1974. And whereas, together with his wife Janice, they were instrumental in establishing a nonprofit organization known as Waves, which still exists today, making waves in helping physically and mentally challenged individuals reach their full potential. And whereas, in September 1972, he was elected to serve an eight-year term as Williamson County's first and only county executive judge slash executive position, a time in which the state legislature had established for the position to be revised from a county judge to a county executive position, thus eliminating judicial responsibilities from the elected position and transitioning the position to an executive branch of government. And whereas, during this time as county judge, Judge Kelly served in the judicial position for juvenile court and probate court, one day per week for each court. And whereas, after this term of service to Williamson County government, Judge Kelly returned to the Williamson County School District and began teaching at Fairview High School in 1984, where he also served as the boys' basketball coach and was again successful in leading another term, another team to its first and only district championship in school history, and subsequently retired in 1994. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Wilburn H. Kelly, Judge Kelly, Jr. for his combined 35 years of dedicated public service to Fairview and Williamson County, and in tribute to his coaching career, the gymnasium at Fairview Recreation Center will be named the William H. Judge Kelly, Jr. Gymnasium, in witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the County of Williamson County be affixed at Franklin, this the eighth day of July 2013. Thank you, Judge Kelly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I consider this a great honor. Thank you so much.
And with him is Blake and Janice, and if they'll stand up, they are very supportive of everyone in the community, and I really appreciate them. Blake, I mean Dwight, do you have anything you want to say? Thank you very much.
This commission will take a recess if we're not through by this time around 11:30, and we'll meet at the Williamson County Agricultural Exposition Park for lunch. And the Commissioners, if you'll meet at the front door for our annual photograph. And so, there's that. Next, we have reports from county offices. County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. My message will be short, but I've got a couple of things I'd like to lay out. First of all, my thank you goes to Arden Cook and Judy Hayes, Steve Smith, and your Chairman of the Budget Committee, Ernie Williams, for a masterful job of working through the budget for this coming year that you'll be dealing with here very shortly. They are presenting to you this morning a budget that does not require a tax increase and leaving the tax rate at the same. So, thank you very much for your hard work. I couldn't say the thank you to the Budget Committee without some of the support staff in our office that have put in countless hours. In fact, Nina and Phoebe worked July the 4th because we're on such a short time today, being the 8th and close out the books. So, to Nina and Phoebe for working July the 4th, July the 5th, and here up here on Saturday also to get you the numbers. We're 99% sure all of the numbers are correct under this new software program we've got. It'll be a little while before we're sure, but we're 99% sure. That gives us an out, I guess. Let me report just a couple of things I'd like to share with you. This year's budget of $434,850,406 will be laid out to you in just a short while, so I'm not going to go through the traditional things that we would. I'll ask Nina to come up here and just touch on the privileged tax report and anything else that you might want to have discussed. From time to time, there are people that you lose in your organization, losing your county, that you just really hate to see go. And one of those is in our audience today, and I'm going to ask Becky Bronby to stand from where she's seating back there. We won't call her a traitor, but she's leaving us. She's moving on into a different role. She's done a wonderful job as our Director of Public Health here in Williamson County. She's got years and years and years worth of service, even though she looks as young as she does. And she will be closing out her career as our Public Director. She's on your report. She's here almost every meeting. You don't hear a lot from her, but public health plays such an important and vital role here in Williamson County, and a lot of that credit goes to her and her staff. Becky, thank you. And my final comment this morning, because the rumors will start swirling, so let's make the announcement late Friday afternoon. We got, I got a letter along with the Chairman of the Commission that was disclosing that Judge Al Nations will be retiring on October the 1st of this year. So, between now and October 1st, he will still serve, but at that point, that appointment will come back to you sometime in the month of September or October that you will have to make an appointment for that position at that time. I'll entertain any questions after Nina. Nina, do you want to touch on the privileged tax and a few things?
Rogers, Commissioner Williams has a question.
I don't really have a question for Mayor. I just want to say that as being Chairman of the Budget Committee this year, I've served on the Budget Committee before, but this is the first year I've been Chairman. And I have been very impressed with the Directors of the Department, how efficient and how they work together, and then on top of that, before they even bring it to the Budget Committee, the Mayor has vetted them very heavily. So, it really makes the job pretty easy, and to know that you've got competent people as Directors of the Departments means a lot to this commission and to this county. So, that's all I want to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Nina?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commission. This month, we have several reports to go through. You have your May privileged tax report, also your May budget report, which those numbers have come in strong, and your Cool Springs Conference Center report for the month of May. We did have to pay back to them $19,740.92. I did receive preliminary numbers from the Cool Springs Conference Center. They too are working on their fiscal year-end closeout, so we'll have their final numbers to you the next meeting, but they are showing a net profit which the county would receive, $13,344 at this time. You also have in your package your June privileged tax report, which closes out our year. We have strong numbers coming in still. We'll have a growth over the last four years. Also, you have your privileged tax history, which kind of gives you a snapshot of the full collections for each of our 24 years that we've been collecting. The 2012-13 will give you the total collections for each of the sections that we collect taxes for. You also have a budget history report. You should have the revised report on your desk, which shows the total expenditures for the county. The funds, the county funds were up slightly. The majority of that was due to the funding for the school resource officers this year. You also have in your packet a snapshot of the current property tax calculations. That is how we derive what the per penny rate will be collected for the county for each of those funds. I also have the preliminary report for the month of June for the budget report. The schools are still working on their closeout. As the Mayor said, I did put estimated up there because we will have Tyler Technology personnel that'll come in and help us with the actual closeout on the new system. I don't really anticipate those numbers to change, but since this is our first year, I just wanted to put that out there. And also, you have your detailed budget summary that lists your beginning fund balances for each of the funds for the 13-14 year, your estimated revenue expenditures, and the ending fund balance. And it also shows the fund balance draw for each of those funds. And that's all the reports that I have, if anyone has any questions.
Commissioner Danner.
Hi, Nina. Nina, thank you, first of all, for working on the 4th of July and all your, on the weekend. Thank you for doing that and getting the numbers to us. I have a question, and I apologize, usually I try to give you a heads up, but on a Monday morning after the weekend, I thought of it this morning. I've done this before, and if you don't know, maybe you could just get back to us, but at the Budget Committee meeting, there was a very large number thrown out there, $74 million, that may be coming our way if you add up all the capital requests, including, and I want to kind of address this upfront because we've got, you know, about $7 million, $4 million that we're voting on for the schools, and then there's an intent to fund of about $3 million for some various projects. If we were to vote yes on everything and we got to that $74 million number to go out and buy in the bond market in November, would that, can we do that without a tax increase the next year or the next two years? And what is the tipping point? How much can we afford to go to the bond market in November and not incur a tax increase?
I don't have those figures.
Okay.
I mean, that might be something I could try to get together, but that is hard to predict. I mean, I can tell you what we pay off in principle each year, and until you actually get your schedules for your debt, it's hard to anticipate what each year of those debt service requirements would be, but I can try to estimate that.
If you can take a shot at it, maybe before our September meeting, just because for me personally, at least, I don't like just, we get a lot of good ideas, but I don't know that we can afford them all. And so, it would help me go a long way in discerning what to vote yes for and maybe what to defer, what to vote no for, and maybe hope it can come up another time.
Okay. I have been working with our financial advisor on trying to get together some different schedules that may be more helpful in our bond book, our debt book that we hand out each year, and we should be able to show the payment that's due for each of the years upcoming, so that should help.
Be very helpful. Thank you.
Point of reference on those.
Thank you, Nina. Ms. Chairman, the final two things I do want to touch on, and Commissioner Danner brought those out. Last year, we paid a total of $31 million plus in principle on our debt. That should make a major difference. And our strong, we will end up the year with a very strong fund balance again. I think the final thing that oftentimes we hear a lot of conversation about here in our county, just what's, what is the temperature of our community as opposed to some of the other surrounding areas? And I can't speak about the other surrounding areas. I can speak about what's happening in Williamson County. The month of June, we showed the single largest new home permits that we've had since 2006. We had 46 residential permits pulled in the month of, in the month of June. So, for the year, for the six-month running, we've got 209 building permits that have been pulled. We did 240 all of last year. So, we're on scale, it looks like, for residential building permits to go back into the 2005-2006 era. We'll keep that, keep a close eye on that. That will affect the next individual that comes up here, and that's our Director of Schools and our student population. We're also seeing a larger increase in, you know, the building permits don't always give an indication of new student growth, but many of you know that there's been a lot of apartments that have also been built in your cities, if you happen to represent the cities. And so, we're seeing some increased activity in those areas, I suspect, also. Why is all that important? It is very important that we have a strong fund balance. It's a very important thing, not just to maintain our ladies AAA bond rating that we have, because we know we're going to have to borrow money for some projects. We know that this coming, next year or two, we've got at least a high school and some more elementary schools and a middle school, just by the growth that we continue to have in Williamson County. I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you what the future really looks like, but it's, it is very strong in Williamson County, and a strong, a lot of that credit goes not only to you for listening and studying and doing your due diligence before you just come and sit down here at the table and push buttons, but you attend those meetings, and we appreciate that very much. Also, to our department heads not spending all their money, the other elected officials, the appointed people that are serving you on a day-to-day basis, I can almost tell you across the board, all of them turn back in money rather than spend it in those last 30 days. And finally, I remind you of what we did here in January, which was unique. It's almost like an incubator across the state. You stepped up to the plate, and you funded a lot of SROs in every single elementary school in Williamson County, both the Williamson County Public School System and the Franklin Special School District. And it took a sizable amount of money and took a sizable amount of our capital to make all of that work, but with that, we were able to fight back and claw back, and I want to say thank you for having faith in the staff and the other people around here. We're going to have our differences, but at the end of the day, we're a growing community, we're a sound community, and we're a very prosperous community, and it's great to be a part of this community. Thank you. I'll answer any questions, Jane.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes. I wanted to, I thank you for giving all the accolades to the departments and all those that have worked so hard in our state and local governments. And I, I think sometimes it's good, and I appreciate the history sheet that we had given to us. The, the most positive thing I think I've gotten out of all, you know, all that we have done to make things work is to go back and kind of remember the three years that we had somewhat of a downturn, even though we may not have experienced as much as others. I just think it's rewarding to know that things have come back and that although we have not gotten everything we want, we have come around and we've been, had a conservative budget that has met the needs, and I want to thank everybody personally, as I know all the Commission would.
Any other questions for the Mayor? I see none. Next, we have Director of Schools, Dr. Mike Looney. And while Dr. Looney's on his way up, I need to make a couple of comments I forgot earlier. Like to thank Commissioner Arden Cook, Commissioner Judy Hayes, Commissioner Betsy Hester, Commissioner Judy Herbert, Randolph Matthews in the County Mayor's Office, and Commissioner Cheryl Wilson for providing the food this morning. Also like to recognize Representative Charles Sargent in the back. We're always glad to see our representatives in the state here. Also like to thank Deputy Kiger, Deputy Zolikoffer, our security, also Chief Deputy Rhodes and Roddy Parker back there in the back from the Sheriff's Office, and thank you all for being here. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I too would like to congratulate this commission for paying off, I understand, $31 million of debt this past year. I want to give great gratitude and thank yous to Chairman Jack Walton, Commissioner Langston for his service on the Education Committee, and for Chairman of the Budget Committee, Mr. Ernie Williams. Thank you for your stewardship and your guidance through this, this budgeting process. As you know, the school system comprises a majority of the budget because schools are expensive and we're ever-growing. We're expecting a, a 2.7% increase in our student population. We have some concerns that that may be a too conservative estimate based on the Mayor's comments just previous to me. If we're going back to 2005-2006 numbers, at that point in time, we were projecting a 7% annual increase in students, so we're projecting 2.7% this year. I too would also like to thank my Board Chairman, Ms. Pat Anderson, for her service and leadership. Our Board members, all the way from the most experienced to some of our newer ones, including Mrs. Sherri Hammond, who's a CPA and has given lots of guidance on the budgeting process moving forward. I do ask that you consider positively our budget request for the 2013-14 year. We've spent our money wisely, and our commitment is to make sure that every dime that we spend of the taxpayers' money in Williamson County is spent well and in a manner that will produce good productive results that you're accustomed to. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes. Hi, Dr. Looney.
Good morning, ma'am.
Two issues I'd like to ask you about.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, I just have to clear this up because I'm getting a lot of questions. Are the lobbyists that you hired, are you, are those being paid for with taxpayer dollars?
They were paid for with taxpayers' dollars, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are they, are they still hired? Are you going to hire, are they stay employed year-round, or?
We signed a one-year contract with them. Their employment was based out of last year's budget. There is no new budget money designed for lobbyists.
Okay, but they're under a one-year contract, so they would, they would still be serving you then throughout this year?
Yes, ma'am.
If that's the case, I'd like to get a monthly report on what they're working on, if I could, and their names, could know who, what, who they are and what they're working on. Then the second thing is, in the last Education Committee meeting, it was mentioned that the state is going to give the county over, over a million dollars, a bit over a million, to spend on the technology that's needed for the Common Core Park Assessment Test. And I asked you, you know, what percentage that represents of what you're going to need to fully implement those tests, and you said it's really only going to be about a third.
Right.
And not including the, the devices.
That's right.
So, can you go ahead and for the, for the public record here, tell us what your estimate is and what you will need total for the IT expenses for those park assessment tests? The IT costs?
Well, it's a moving target because the park assessment has not been completed yet. They're going to be piloting portions of the park assessment this fall. I don't have a specific number for you today, Mrs. Danner, but I would estimate between $4 and $5 million is what we're going to need, full package. The state has, as I said in the Education Committee, the state in the long run has indicated that there will be more money potentially forthcoming to LEAs. What that amount of money, what that monies, how much that is, and when it comes, I have no idea.
Okay.
Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Dr. Looney, I was wondering what the sales tax receipts are looking like for our county this year for education?
I honestly, I can't speak to that, but I could have Mrs. Holman come up. Leslie, will you come up?
If you don't mind. Thank you, Mrs. Holman.
What I've projected in the budget for next year is right at a 6%. We did well this year, but there were a couple of months that it went down to like a 3%. So, I, and I'm usually conservative in my numbers, but about 6%, so.
Yes. Thank you. Is that a little bit higher than, sorry, is that a little bit higher than last year?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you. That's good news. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbert?
Hi, Dr. Looney.
Good morning, ma'am.
Since we're talking about maybe possibly building a school at Nodlesville, I just wanted to get an update on the auditoriums that we agreed to fund in this budget year, the status of them.
Yes, ma'am. We have a couple of projects that are very near underway. Will begin construction early this fall on, I believe, all of them.
Okay. And we also approved some athletic miscellaneous things back a couple of years ago, and I was wondering, how many of those have been completed?
None of them have been completed, but they're all under construction at this point in time, or if they haven't started construction yet, I've been, I've been out for nine days, so they may have started when I was gone, but they're either under construction or about to begin construction.
So, when do we intend? So when do we anticipate those being completed?
Within 120 days.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Dr. Looney? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other committee wishing to report at this time? I see none, moving on. Next, we have elections and appointments. The Animal Control Director resigned Doug Brightwell. Appointment, Laura Cheveria. Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Smith II. Any other appointments? I see none. If you're in favor of Laura Cheveria, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she here?
She is.
Oh, welcome. Would you like to say something? Okay, we look forward to working with you. Commissioner Hayes?
I was just going to welcome Laura here. We lost an excellent director in Doug Brightwell. Laura has come from Florida, we sent him to Florida, and, and Laura had moved here, and she has continued to do the, some of the great things that Doug had started. She's expanded and increased them. She's done some real novel things and continues to oversee our goal of improving adoption and decreasing euthanasia. She's done an excellent job, and we're so glad she's here, and she's hit the floor running, and we, we appreciate that. She also has a new bookkeeper hired, and we're so glad to have you here, too. Thank you for being here.
Moving on, the next election appointment is Water and Wastewater Authority Engineer, five-year term expiring July 2018. Term expiring John Lackey. Nomination, John Lackey. Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Wilson II. All in favor of John Lackey, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And John Lackey is confirmed. The next item on the agenda, normally at this time, we, we usually take a break, but because this is our rotating committees, and we're in our fourth year of our term, so there's only one person eligible for that committee, and that list is in our packet, so for the sake of time, and we have a long agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Do we need to do those?
By each committee?
Yeah, each committee. So I'll entertain, the first one I have is Human Resources Committee. Those eligible serve, Commissioner Dwight Jones, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, Commissioner Jeff Ford, Commissioner Bert Chalafont, Commissioner Mary Brockman, Commissioner Brandon Ryan. I'll entertain a motion for those. Commissioner Little, Commissioner Jones II. All in favor of the Human Resources Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are unanimously approved. Next, I have Parks and Recreation Committee. Commissioner John Hancock, Commissioner Kathy Danner, Commissioner Arlene Cook, Commissioner Jack Walton, Commissioner Bob Barnwell, Commissioner Brian Beathard. I'll entertain a motion for the Parks and Rec Committee.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Bain II. All in favor of the Parks and Rec Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are passed unanimously. Next, I have the Rules Committee. Eligible to serve, Commissioner Ricky Jones, Commissioner Judy Herbert, Commissioner Tommy Little, Commissioner Tom Bain, Commissioner Ernie Williams, and Commissioner Doug Langston. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Hester II. All in favor of the Rules Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rules Committee is confirmed. Next, we have the Steering Committee. Eligible to serve is Commissioner Betsy Hester, Commissioner Judy Hayes, Commissioner Louis Green, Commissioner Greg Davis, Commissioner Travis Hawkins, Commissioner Steve Smith. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Hayes II. All in favor of the Steering Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are passed. So now we're moving on to Consent Agenda, and it's in your packet. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, okay, it, consent is loaded. Hancock, Herbert. Very good, thank you. All in favor of the Consent Agenda, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. All right, anyone wants to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Consent Agenda passes unanimously. There's no unfinished business, so moving on to new business. There's no zoning. So first item we have, and I guess Nina, if you'll come up, Resolution 7131, a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Bain II. Let's see here. We've got the committee reports.
The committee reports were mailed out.
Oh, okay.
So everybody should have one of those.
All right, the committee reports were mailed out, and I don't have mine right here, but, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against.
All right. And what, what we'll do is take the General Fund, and we'll complete the General Fund. We'll have to vote on each category separately, and then we'll vote again on it as a whole, and then we'll skip the schools and, after we do the general, and come back to the schools. So Nina, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. On the General Fund, the General Administration category is $11,192,963.
I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Barnwell?
Second.
Commissioner Williams II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of the General Fund at $11,192,963, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
Under the Major Heading of Finance, $4,267,094.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner Williams II. Any discussion? See none. If you're in favor of the Finance at $4,267,094, signify by saying, pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
All right, Nina?
Administration of Justice, $3,591,528.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Chalafont II. Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Administration of Justice at $3,591,528, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
Major Category, Public Safety, $19,372,800.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Commissioner Bain II. Any discussion? See none. If you're in favor of Public Safety at $19,372,800, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
Public Health and Welfare, $4,625,040.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Commissioner Little II. Any discussion? See none. If you're in favor of Public Health and Welfare at $4,625,040, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
All right, Nina?
Social, Cultural, and Recreational Services, $12,740,987.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Wilson II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Social, Cultural, and Recreational Services at $12,740,987, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
Agricultural and Natural Resources, $407,120.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Agricultural and Natural Resources at $407,120, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
Other General Government, $19,631,404.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Chalafont II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Other Government, General Government, at $19,631,404, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Nina?
For a total General Fund of $75,828,144.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman II. Any discussion on the total? See none. If you're in favor of the total General Fund at $75,828,144, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
And the total General Fund passes. Nina?
The Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, Sanitation Management, $4,563,251.
Move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, we're just doing the total, Nina.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The total Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, $5,454,601.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams, the motion. Commissioner Wilson II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Solid Waste Sanitation Fund at $5,454,601, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote. Nina?
24, yes, zero, no.
Keeping you on your toes.
That's right.
Nina?
Okay, the Special Drug Fund, $90,000.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Wilson II. If you're in favor of the, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Special Drug Control Fund at $90,000, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
The total Highway Public Works Fund, $11,74,881.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Jones II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Highway Public Works Fund at $11,74,881, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. All right, Nina?
The total General Debt Service Fund, $43,972,000.
Move for approval.
Do we need to go back? Oh, okay, all right. Linda, you ready? Commissioner Williams made the motion. Commissioner Brockman II. The total General Debt Service Fund at $43,972,000, if you're in favor, signify by saying, pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Nina?
The total Rural Debt Service Fund, $25,520,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman II. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total Rural Debt Service Fund at $25,520,000, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. That's it? All right. Now we'll move on to the School Fund. Dr. Looney, you want to come up, or Judy? I guess we'll pick up at the General Purpose School Fund.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our budget request is 260 million even.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? Total General Purpose School Fund, $260 million. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Dr. Looney?
Central Cafeteria Fund, we're requesting $11,84,482.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman II. Any discussion? See none. If you're in favor of the total Central Cafeteria Fund at $11,84,482, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
We've got one vote in there. Thank you. 24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Dr. Looney?
The Extended School Program Fund, $1,826,298.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the motion. Commissioner Wilson II. Y'all, any discussion? See none. If you're in favor of the total Extended School Program Fund at $1,826,298, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we've, we've got a total budget.
Total Budget, $434,850,406.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Williams? Oh, Commissioner Little, was second. Was second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Interest, but I'll be voting my conscience on the total budget. I think that's a practice we've been doing every year before we get to this.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
If you're in favor, any other discussion? Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for bringing that up. We need, everyone needs to declare that at this present time. I don't have that verbiage. We kind of burnt the biscuits. We didn't. We normally provide that for you. But by the same verbiage that Commissioner Jones on the first district, all of you need to either acknowledge that because you do get a paycheck from this, this body, and so you're in essence. Jack, could you give us about five minutes? We could go get that and so that, can you just break for five minutes? Because that is very important.
Okay. Yes, we, we will recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
I'd like to call us back to order at this time. Staff has passed out a conflict of interest statement. So if you'll sign that and make sure the clerk gets that. It's also loaded on the machine. And if you'll read it, I won't read it at this time because I've already passed mine in. But we're, if, if you're in favor of this, you ready to vote? Move for approval. Commissioner Williams? All right, and Commissioner Brockman the second. Yes, thank you. If you're in favor of the conflict of interest statement, signify by saying, pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. All right. Now we'll pick up where we left off. As a whole. Yeah. And we're, we're voting on the. Nina's already read it. Yeah, okay. So it's already been read into the record. So now we're voting on the total county budget, including all funds, at $434,854,406. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Green the second. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of the total county budget at $434,854,406, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
And the county budget has passed. Oh, okay. Now, now we're voting on Resolution 713-1 as presented. And so I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Brockman the second. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-1, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-2, resolution fixing the tax levy in Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second. Budget committee?
Budget committee was 4-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is the resolution fixing the tax levy in Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, at $2.31. Same as last year.
All right. Commissioner Cook?
I didn't press my buttons. At least I didn't think I did.
Oh, okay. All right. Commissioner Ryan?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question for, for the mayor on this, if I may. Mayor, I know one penny was shifted from the county general over to the, to the schools, which I know was very much needed. Do you foresee this to be a permanent shift? Or is this just a one-year?
If you're asking me, Commissioner, I'd say no, it's not permanent. If you ask the schools, they'll want it. We'll have to claw and fight to get it back. But in all honesty, during the process of the budget proceedings that we went on, as you know, the schools asked for one amount. And the budget committee, we kind of go back and forth. That's not changed, I guess, in my, since 1986, when I first started this. But Dr. Looney and I sit down and said, how much money do you really need? How much can you think you can work with? He's got to go through his committees. You've got to go through yours. At the end of the day, the revenue stream that he was anticipating did not materialize in the way that he wanted it to. They were asking for two or three pennies, and I couldn't go along with that. We agreed to shift one from ours to make the numbers work. If it comes in stronger than that, y'all need to remember that because I will remember it. And in all honesty, you try to present a budget without raising the taxes. I'd rather have it on our side for the things we need. But public education is very strong. And, and I don't foresee it being a problem. But I will be clawing to try to get it back next year.
Any other questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-2, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-3, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman the second. Budget committee?
Budget committee was 4-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Self-explanatory resolution making application to non-charitable organizations of Williamson County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013. I'd like to say this, too. There's been some discussion in, in committees about the nonprofit organizations. To my knowledge, other than the last two, which are just basically the transfer from county funds to community funds, there has not been an addition. I've been on the commission over 10 years. There has not been a, a new nonprofit organization added to the list the time I've been on the commission.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes, I'd like to make a, a comment on this for the, for the minutes. And then I also, I also have a, a question or something that maybe the mayor can, can address just for, for public knowledge. My comment is the same one I make every year. I have nothing against any of the institutions that this money is slated to go support. But until this commission votes on a nonprofit guidelines resolution that would outline why some of these nonprofits are chosen and others in the community are not, I can't support it. The question I have, we did, this, this resolution did go from 1.5 million to 2 million. And though we did not, and I appreciate Commissioner Williams, she pointing out, we didn't add any new nonprofit organizations. We did, it went up, I think, because we did increase the amount of hotel motel tax that we invest in the visitors bureau, which I voted for and fully support. The other item, though, is that we moved the function of the public, from the public sector to the private sector of the Department of Economic Development. And I noticed that it's, we've got a line item of 300,000. And I just wanted to understand again, are we, is that a permanent addition? Are we always going to be giving that? Or my understanding was, the whole idea was to move that department out and over so that we would save the county money. And I, I just kind of question how long that item, that 300,000 is going to be on there.
Ms. Chairman, I'll try to answer her questions. And Mr. Williams is correct. There's no one on there that was, that's new this year. And his assessment is correct over the last several years. The convention and visitors bureau, you have two of your members that serve on that. And we brought that number up to the 25% of the hotel motel tax. You all voted for that. There would be some discussions here. Steve Smith would tell you that they're really not a nonprofit, but that's how they have to file. And we go through this every year. But I appreciate what they do over there. Likewise, I say to the economic development, many of you know, during the last year, the year and a half, the, all the chambers excluding Spring Hill, and I think Fairview, are members of one chamber now for Williamson County. And it was my desire that I think that organizations that can generate revenue and work in the private sector do better outside underneath without being under government. They just have more latitude to do things with some oversight. And you all provide that oversight by serving on those committees. Economic development's budget last year was $300,000. And so in the transfer of rolling them over to the nonprofit side, we allowed them no new money. They were able to roll the unfunded, the, the balance left on their amount for this year, which was about 120,000. Is that right, Nina? 100 and, when they finally went over in February and March? Does that sound right? About 150, somewhere along in there, about a half. Six months had gone through. So we allowed that to be rolled over. We presented that to you. And so this year's budget is 300,000. Just because economic development goes over to the chamber side doesn't mean economic activity is not important to Williamson County because they represent the entire county base. When we set this up originally, we do have some benchmarks that they've got to make on a periodical basis, on an annual basis. They'll have to submit that. And we agreed upfront, if with the budget passed, that we would do another $300,000, which you're about to vote on. Will that completely go away? I would like to think as time goes on, as they raise their revenue stream up on the other side, then yes, we would like to see that decrease. Even though we transferred only 300,000, rolled it from the county rolls to the 501(c) side rolls that you're looking at, you have to remember, we did save three personnel. And that's a significant step. So you're three, three headcount less than you would have had at this time last year, excluding your SROs and the other 48 positions that you all, or total 48 positions you all have approved for this year. So there is a savings on our health insurance. And I could go into a whole spiel about the coming 12 to 18 months in health insurance in this country and how it's going to trickle down to the local level, how I feel like that's going to play out here in Williamson County for our 4,500, is that right? 4,800 total employees, counting school and all. We're almost a workforce now of 10,000, counting the dependents that we have. So we're a large little corporation that does our own health insurance. And through the efforts of Mike Weber and HR and Gina Kavanaugh and working with the school personnel, we've got to address some serious issues on that. What's that got to do with this whole budget? I mean, the 501, not a lot, except the more that we can get out from under government, the better we can perform and operate. However, I don't expect this number to go down this year. Hopefully, next year, and that's based upon their direction and how they can do. We have a lot of businesses that are continuing contacting us. But you've not had to do any tax incentive deals in, in, was the Tractor Supply the last one? I'm calling for memory, is that right, Arlene, Tommy? Or Mars, one of those two. But we've got two or three very large corporations looking at moving into our area. And we signed confidentiality's. And so that's not going to go away, Commissioner, that people are not going to want to come here. But we're very, very tight on the amount of money. And they got to bring jobs and performance. And I think Bob Barnwell brought it up back in January or February this year about one of our companies not making the benchmarks and they were being sold out. You may not have seen it, but that's exactly what happened. And a company didn't make its benchmarks. And Jeff can tell, go into all of it you want. We shut the, shut the tax credits down on one particular one because they didn't make those benchmarks. So that's how we're doing those contracts. Hopefully, we'll monitor that, Ms. Danner.
Commissioner Wilson?
I appreciate it. The question that I had was actually answered pretty efficiently. But I, I still, I think, I think it's been adequately answered because I had a concern about that myself. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Ms. Chairman, thank you. Want to make things for the record and so the public knows. And of course, you could always go and see this, this resolution. But I would like to be able to read these nonprofit organizations into the record because I think it's important that the public understands what we're, what we're supporting. Arrington Volunteer Fire Department, College Grove Volunteer Fire Department, Flat Creek Bethesda Volunteer Fire Department, Nolanville Volunteer Fire Department, Williamson County Rescue Squad, Paton for Volunteer Fire Department, MC Community Action Agency, Regional Mental Health Center, MCHRA Homemaker Services, State Rehabilitation Center, Grace Works, Foster Children, Adult Activities Waves, Franklin Senior Citizens, Fairview Senior Citizens, Hillsboro Senior Citizens, College Grove Senior Citizens, Bethesda Senior Citizens, Nolanville Senior Citizens, Brentwood Senior Citizens, Spring Hill Senior Citizens, Library Brentwood, Library Spring Hill, Boys and Girls Club, Community Child Care, My Friends House, Crime Stoppers, MCHRA Nutrition Program, MCHRA Transportation Program, Court Appointed Special Advocacy, Community Housing Partnership, Association for Retarded Citizens, Greenbrier Community Center, Saddle Up, Bridges of Williamson County, Convention Investors Bureau, and the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams? Any further questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 713-3, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, two, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-4, resolution of an intent to fund certain projects totaling $3,340,000 in the fall 2013 bond issue. Commissioner Williams?
Move approval.
Commissioner Little the second. Budget committee report?
Budget is 4-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a resolution intent to fund certain projects totaling $3,440,000 in the fall of 2013 bond issue. Requesting $1,500,000 to Public Safety, $650,000 to Academy Park Senior Citizen, and $1,190,000 to Solid Waste Smart Cell Design and Construction.
All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was just wondering if I could get a little bit more exclamation about the public safety vehicles? Just so I'll know, I'm going to feel safer, what exactly they are, Mr. Jorgensen? Or Rogers, or? Thank you. What is a public safety vehicle? Just from my own education.
Is there a general heading for public safety vehicles? I think we have about 900,000 for vehicles, which includes fire apparatus and then one response vehicle for.
It is for the fire.
Yeah, 788,000 of that, I believe, is for fire apparatus.
Okay.
And then probably another 30,000, I think, for the fire service, for a battalion chief-type vehicle. And then the remainder of that's for emergency management to replace some aging vehicles in the fleet.
No new fire engines?
Yes. There is. It may not necessarily be a fire engine, but it will be fire apparatus. There's about 788,000 in there for fire apparatus. There's about 788,000 in there for fire apparatus. It may be a rescue, it may be a fire engine, it may be a tanker, it may be a couple brush trucks and...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Danner?
Yes, I'm not sure who to address this to, but the Academy Park Senior Center and Theater has an architectural fee of $650,000. Can I, can someone go on the record as to what the financial scope of that project is and whose idea was it?
Commissioner, it was my idea. Along with a whole bunch of other people, I'm sure they would raise their hands. About two or three years ago, maybe four, I forget now, it takes us long to get something to this level. We had a committee put together that represented a broad spectrum of all of the senior city, senior city, senior activities in, we looked at providing some more services for our seniors here in Williamson County. This is an attempt of the senior citizens here in the, at the current lien, specifically the J.L. Clay Senior Citizen, to do an architect, doing that $650,000 to put that project on to the old BGA, which is now affectionately called the Academy Park area. If we're successful, this will be under the oversight of Doug Hood. We are in the process of trying to determine how many square feet we will need for the center. Many of you are familiar with the J.L. Clay Senior Citizen that's over here on Bridge Street. It's very old, it's very antiquated. And in my opinion, we can do better than that for our seniors. Under what model should we be following upon, Commissioner Danner? I think the Martin Center up in Brentwood is an outstanding senior citizen that's run very professional. I think all of our senior citizens are run very professional. But we need a facility for our seniors in which to work. We chose this area, this committee chose, will be choosing the activities in which to go into that. The backside of that, which some of you that have attended the BGA, was either called the library or it was called the old gym, depending on which area that you lived in. And we're going to take that gymnasium or the old library, which was the same area of the schools, we're putting together the science and math kits, and they have vacated that, and I appreciate that, so that we can design and put in a community theater that would seat between, around 300 people in our community. Would not compete with the Franklin Theater, would not compete with the pull type. This is a community theater which Doug can give you a whole half a day sermon on of how he needs space for that. The $650,000, I hope, will tell us how much, how many dollars we're going to need. If you're asking me for a specific amount, I know you are, I couldn't possibly come up with that number other than to tell you it'll be somewhere between 18,000 and 20,000 square feet. You can do the math at $150 a foot to $175 a foot. We do on the land, and I feel like it's a worthwhile project. I also think we ought to go to Franklin and get Franklin to participate and help. So we've vexed that. We've also approached some of the members on the J.L. Clay, that they have some fund balances, and we expect them to participate in that payment too. And finally, when that piece of property becomes available, we will have to surplus that piece of property, which is a very advantageous, strong advantage point, being close to Franklin. We think that it'll bring in some dollars. We own the property currently, and we ought to be able to surplus that out. So, that help you answer your question?
Thank you. I just want to say, I do generally like the idea of reusing a property that's vacant or that we own, and it sounds like a very sweet idea. I wish I wasn't around when the committee met, and I guess the idea was dreamed up. But until I have some idea of what we can afford and what we can't afford, for me, this falls in the column of a want and not a need, so I won't be able to support the intent to fund.
And that's your vote?
Yep.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, if you will, real quick, in terms of the, which I would agree, we, all of these are certainly are needed. But in terms of the senior center and the theater, are the, is that a package deal or is it something that we could separate out? Because I mean, we, frankly, this county commission has, has fully supported a number of theaters just within the past 12 to 18 months, between the schools, the tax issue with the Franklin Theater. And so, just didn't know if that was a package deal or if those two could be separated out.
Well, I guess you could separate them out, but many of the programs that you all have voted on at individual schools, believe me, at the schools, they have all the needs that they, they're driving for. Quite frankly, working all of these different groups in and their schools is a very difficult thing. It's like having, you know, in some states, you have one athletic facility that everybody plays football there on Friday night. That's another approach. You could look at funding programs, that some of them play on Thursday, some on Friday, some on Saturdays. Different states do it differently, or cities. I don't know that Williamson County is ready for that. This community theater is to service the needs of the functions, not only within the schools when they need it, but our outside theatrical part. The arts is a major portion here in Williamson County that we're probably lacking in, and we need to address that. If you also desire to carve that out, then that's what we'll do. But I think it goes hand in hand because the building is there, and we need to do some things to that, that area down there to make it more advantageous for our seniors, our youth, next to our library, next to our middle college, high school. I just think it needs to go as a package.
Thank you. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rogers, one question. I have spoken with Doug Hood about this project mainly because I'm very sensitive to the historic nature of that campus. We lost Fleming Hall, which I was very disappointed, we could not do a preservation effort there. We've lost that building. This building was built at the turn of the century. It is the second oldest gymnasium in the state of Tennessee. The one at Vanderbilt is the, is the oldest. I asked the Tennessee Historical Commission to send out a representative in order to assess that building, to see if it could be nominated to be on the national register. Too many changes had been made to the interior, not necessarily to the exterior, but they also look at the interior, since it'd been changed from a gym to a library when BGA was functioning. They were not able to bring it forward with the nomination. I'm still sensitive to that building and the way any new construction is going to look. What I was, what I saw was an addition across the back, which would not take away from the aesthetic value of the original structure as it stands with the cupola and the large windows on the front. I never heard that it was going to be anything more than a community arts and theater function. And so I'm concerned that possibly we're adding a very large addition on the back. Is that true or not?
The, I'll get Doug up here to bail me out on a little bit of it, but to answer your question, no. We need a lobby area for that to occur, and we think we can go on the football side and structure that without, without doing anything to the front except restoring the integrity of that building and using it. The loading ramp that faces, what is that, Everbright?
Right.
So, Everbright, we want to close back in.
Understand.
You know, but I think when you, when it's all said and done, and Doug can help me out here, that, that building, we're going to preserve it to the best of our ability.
Basically, the footprint of the building is the same.
That's exactly right.
Except for a small addition on the back where you will enter the building and give you proper access.
That's correct.
Okay, so that hasn't changed. We're not adding some, you know, 50,000 square foot structure out the back.
No, ma'am, we're not. What we're, what we're proposing is to enter from the backside, that will be the small lobby area. And then there were also at the far end of her where the bathrooms would be. Because what we've done with the inside and tried to come up with this is to get, to be able to seat 300 people in there. But we're looking at a process in doing this of having bleacher type theater seating that folds back into the wall. It goes straight back into the wall, and then we'll have that a whole area open. We've identified 127 things we can do in that building. 127 things for the whole community to do, including taking middle college where they don't have a theater and including them in that package so that we can work like we've always done with the schools to let them utilize it as well. We've got a ton of ideas to do in there. It's not just a straight up theater.
I totally support that effort, and in the way it was described to me, I just was not certain if we had gone beyond that. So it really is a community center focusing primarily on arts.
Yes, ma'am. Close on there. And the other thing, which we've talked about, and I think that day I met you there and told you, you know, you can go out that backside where that football field is and keep, and we can have concerts there. We can bring in portable stages and do concerts and do all kinds of things in the arts that are supported by the community. And I, and I'm looking at this as a revenue producing project, and like I do most things.
Exactly. Thank you, Doug.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Herbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I support all this money to the senior citizen centers and also this for the, for this project. You know, the majority of the taxes go toward the schools, and I feel like the senior citizens deserve something for all the taxes they pay, that, you know, they don't ask for much and they deserve this. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any further questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 7134, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, two no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7135, resolution requesting an intent to fund in the amount of $4 million for the Williamson County Board of Education 2013-2014 capital needs. Commissioner Langston?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell II, School Board, 11 yes, 0 no. Education Committee?
740 against.
Budget Committee?
440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This is the $4 million that we've just approved. The School Board is asking for us to go on and appropriate that money where it can be used for projects beginning with the scoot now and the new school year.
All right. Commissioner Danner?
Yes, I think this will probably be my last no vote, but I just want to go on the record to explain it. We gave the schools, I have two reasons I'm not going to support this. We gave the schools 16 million less than a year ago to shore up old schools, and I supported that. But as we heard tonight, they haven't finished those projects. We're not even sure all of them have been started. And so for the first reason, just for financial reasons, I don't feel comfortable voting for more capital when we don't know what they may have left over from the 16 million. But the second reason is that we don't often have an opportunity to really see directly what the money's going to be used for. And in this case, it was mentioned at the School Board meeting and at the Education, County Commission Budget Meeting, that they're going to use, they have to. And I know, I appreciate that it's a state mandated program, Common Core, but I can't support the funding, the direct funding of Common Core. It is, I appreciate it's a state mandated program, but it's actually a federally run program. It is, the federal government's going to be holding all the carrots and all the sticks to this program. Arnie Duncan is calling the shots. To me, he is to Common Core what Kathleen Sebelius is to Obamacare. Arnie Duncan is to Common Core what Lois Lerner is to IRS. You know, initially, when I heard the data mining aspect of Common Core, I really thought that that was far reaching, but that was weeks before we found out what the NSA and the, and the IRS are capable of under this administration. So, you know, the superintendent can't change it, the teachers can't change it, parents can't take, can't change it. It's untested. I don't blame our mayors, our, excuse me, our governors, Bretton or Haslam, for, for reaching for this program. When you're 46th in the nation, you get kind of desperate, and I think it had good intentions initially. But as we're watching it roll out, just the financial impact, if nothing else, is astonishing. Four to five million dollars it's going to cost us. And so I just can't send a unanimous message on this, on this resolution. I'd like to be heard as being opposed to these costs. I think Tennessee can do better.
Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask about security matters on these particular computers that we're about to vote on. I have heard some concerns from constituents about filters. And I hope that this will be a very simple question, but there are naturally some things that we don't want our students to have available in the classroom on computers. So if I could just get a little clarification, thank you, Dr. Looney.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your question. And the answer is yes. All of our devices, including the student devices that through BYOT are run through our filter, filtering software through the district as required by federal law.
Thank you. That was a concern of mine about that. And thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 7135, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7136, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 capital projects budget by $1,415,000 and approving the related operating transfers. Revenues to come from County General Undesignated Fund Balance. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little II, Budget Committee?
440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This were for certain operating expenses that were needed to sit out there in the resolution, specifically property management roofs, HVAC and equipment, $500,000. Information technology equipment and software, $325,000. Community development equipment and software, $10,000. WCTV upgrade services from analog, $40,000. Share for innovations in equipment, $330,000. Juvenile services and juvenile court of $200,000. And library computer equipment from, of $10,000. And this comes from the County General Undesignated Fund Balance.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 7136, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7137, resolution amending the five-year capital improvements budget and appropriating up to $400,000 recreation privilege tax funds for the purchase of various parks and recreation equipment. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman II, Budget Committee?
440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is for basically four different items that are needed, the new wellness center equipment, indoor sports complex, $175,000. Two maintenance service vans for $50,000. Two maintenance, two trucks for $50,000. And various parks and facility amenities of $125,000, per total of $400,000.
Commissioner Hester, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button.
All right, that's okay. Anybody got any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 7137, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7138, resolution amending the 2013-2014 Highway Department budget and appropriating up to $810,000 for highway equipment purchases. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Jones II, Highway Commission, I assume 540 against. Budget Committee?
440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This has been requested by the Highway Superintendent Transfer Capital Account of $810,000 for different highway equipment purchases, and it will be funded from the Highway Department's fund balance.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 7138, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bernie? Kathy? Yours didn't take. All right. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7139... Resolution 713-9, resolution appropriating $5 million education privilege tax funds and approving the related operating transfers for 2013-14 rural debt service expenditures. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson II. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Education Committee?
Two against.
Did you say five, four, two against?
Right.
Okay. Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This has been requested by Ms. Nina Graham, the Budget Director, for the Rural Debt Service to generate sufficient revenue for 2013-14, which states that additional funds will be requested.
All right. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As with last year, I'm extremely disappointed with this particular resolution, and I'd like to propose an amendment to make this $4 million going to General Debt Service and $1 million going to Rural Debt Service.
Commissioner Ryan II. So, do we have any discussion on the motion, on the amendment, I mean?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor.
Last year, I would, we did $5 million last year to Rural Debt and nothing to General Debt. When I joined this commission, I was informed that the purpose of the privilege taxes was to pay for growth throughout the county and to benefit all taxpayers. In the last five, four years, including this particular resolution, we will have allocated $20 million to Rural Debt Service and $1 million to General Debt Service. This, to me, is an affront to a certain group of taxpayers. It has nothing to do with the Franklin Special School District. This is, this is discrimination against the Franklin Special School District taxpayers who do not pay rural debt. And if you look at this, basically, if these funds were allocated 40% to general debt and 60% to rural debt, which is the split between general debt schools and rural debt schools, you basically boil down that the taxpayers in the Franklin Special School District are funding Rural Debt Service to the extent of about three cents. They are paying for services they're not receiving, and this, to me, should be wrong. And another thing is, we talk about fund balances, having a strong fund balance. Based on the information that I was given last year on fund balances, the fund balance for the General Service Debt Fund has decreased almost 20% since we have obtained our AAA credit rating. I think that's, is potentially a problem leading into money we're getting ready to borrow. Also, the Rural Debt Service Fund Balance has gone up 161%. So theoretically, this, this money's been going to pad the fund balance for Rural Debt Service. And I think it's wrong that one class of taxpayers is being asked to subsidize another class of taxpayers. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Williams?
Can we hear from Ms. Graham on this, on this resolution?
The resolutions are presented in that way because the last seven years of the six schools built, there was one high school, four elementary schools, and one middle school. So, we put the funds in the Rural Debt Service because that's where the debt is growing. I've not had an opportunity to look at Mr. Barnwell's analysis. In comparing the fund balance, I think you should also look at your requirements, your debt service requirements over those years. So, I think if you compare that back, your debt service will be growing over those years more so than the General Debt Service. Also, the general debt per penny rate brings in a larger portion than the rural debt penny rate. So, those funds are allocated in that way to maximize the amount of funds brought into the county. Any other questions?
Follow-up. Commissioner Williams?
Ms. Graham, educate me just a little bit. I understand what Commissioner Barnwell's concerns are. I represent the 9th District, which is the grassland area, which is unincorporated. The taxes that I pay to Mr. Davis's office every year, does any of those, does any of that money go to the Special Franklin School District? My understanding is that, yes, it does. So, people in my district are paying part of taxes for the Special School District. Is that be correct? Thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I was thinking, the last seven years, we've done two high schools, Independence and Summit, and we rebuilt Franklin High School. So, there's three schools in the last seven years, I think, that have, we've borrowed money to fund, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I just got these from what was added to our capital asset listing over the last seven years, and those were the, the schools that were added.
Any further questions on the amendment? I see none. Linda, you got it posted? Ready to vote on the amendment? Bob, can you read that amendment again? You got it written down.
Well, basically, it's, it's to change the distribution to $4 million to general debt and $1 million to, to rural debt with whatever the changes need to be. I'm not the legalese on this thing.
All right. If, if you're in favor of the amendment, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Five yes, 19 no.
The amendment fails. Back to the resolution, the original Resolution 713-9. Any further questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Resolution 713-9, if you're in favor, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
18 yes, six no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-10, resolution of the governing body of Williamson County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing 2013-14 general-purpose school fund tax anticipation notes not to exceed $20 million. Commissioner Langston?
Move for approval.
Mr. Little II. Education Committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This is a resolution that we've approved the last several years to provide funds for the school system to get started during the early part of the school year.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 713-10, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Arlene? Do, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-11, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Register of Deeds budget by $70,700. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little II. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
It's for four different line items that need to be amended for $70,700. The revenues are to come from register of deeds and document recording fees.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-11, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-12, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Circuit Court Clerk budget by $7,000. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson II. Budget Committee, report?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
It's for the Circuit Court Clerk's budget for $7,000, having, having to do with technology and office equipment.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-12, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-13, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety 2013-14 budget by $37,500. Revenues to come from Homeland Security Grant.
Move for approval.
Mr. Ford?
Second.
Mr. Cook II. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
This is the annual allocation of the federal Homeland Security Grant into the line item so we can spend the money.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-13, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-14, resolution requesting approval of DUI Court Coordinator Personnel Change from Part-Time to Full-Time Status. Revenues to come from existing grant funds. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Shalafant II. HR Committee? All right. Law Enforcement?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's, there is revenue in this fund to move the DUI Coordinator from part-time to full-time status, and that's what this does.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-14, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Resolution 713-15, resolution amending the 2013-14 Sheriff's Office budget by $136,300 and authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement and all other documentation for the purchase of used patrol vehicles and equipment from the Kansas Highway Patrol. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance received through federal equitable sharing funds. Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Cook II. Law Enforcement Committee? Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Turns out that the Kansas Highway, Highway Patrol retires their vehicles with a fairly low number of miles on them, and our sheriff has found the ability to purchase four vehicles for, through grant funds for $136,000.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-15, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Parks and Rec budget by $5,947.14. Revenue is to come from donations. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Mr. Wilson II. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This will allow Parks to spend this money that's coming from outside sources to improve the College Grove Art Satorium.
Commissioner Hayes?
A little further explanation. When the art satorium was proposed by Commissioner Lynch and myself to make use for the community, we challenged the community to raise $100,000, and the county would, with the Parks and Rec, would support the remainder. They worked very hard under the leadership of many out there, but the chairperson leading that was Aleen Wallace. And they made money through various things, from book sales to bake sales and all kinds of festivals. When they met their, their goal of $100,000, but in closing out the account, they realized that they had this amount of money left. In the commitment they had made, it was to go to the benefit of the art satorium. So, they did what was absolutely correct and turned it to Parks and Rec to be used for the art satorium, and they're to be congratulated for their hard work in the community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Any further comments, discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-16, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-17, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Parks and Rec budget by $3,000. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Wilson II. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This is so Parks and Recs can accept a donation to build a fence from the Tennessee Soccer Club who would use, who would use that fence. Very appropriate.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 713-17, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Hester? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 713-18, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Animal Control Budget by $5,506. Revenue is to come from Williamson County Animal Services Incorporated, Incorporated was for the purchase and installation of sun tunnels at the Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center. Commissioner Hayes?
Commissioner, move for approval.
Commissioner Little II. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, several years ago, when a task force was formed by the mayor, that task force had several suggestions. One was the formation of the 501(c)(3) Williamson Animal Services. Part of their plan in their establishment was that we need more customer-friendly looking area in the Animal Control and Adoption Center for the socialization of the animals, for the attitude of the animals, but also for the benefit of employees. There's so many dark areas there, some without any outside lighting. So, the thought of skylights were used, but then with the attic above, that made it rather hard. What was determined was the sun tunnel is a type of skylight that comes down into the room and brings light. This will help socialize the animals. This will help socialize the animals, make them more readily adoptable, and also be good for the employees. Money was raised through private donations to this amount of five thousand, five hundred and six dollars. It's already been bid. Things are in readiness. With your acceptance, the check will be handed to us, and we will go ahead and proceed with the sun tunnels. It was started with the permission and support of Mr. Wrightwell, and it is supported by our current Laura, so we do hope that you will support this.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen nineteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand thirteen fourteen Community Development Budget by twenty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds for engineering services concerning the design of traffic and signalization at the intersection of Sneed Road and Vaughn Road. Commissioner Brockman?
Second.
Commissioner Williams the Second, Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was four, four, zero against.
Mary, one of y'all want to speak to that or Greg?
You know, Vaughn Road used to be a little dirt road practically, I think. I feel like I'm in the Dark Ages, but things have changed, and the traffic at that intersection where Vaughn tees into Sneed Road deserves attention, and this money is coming from the traffic shed to start the process, the design services for a signal there, and it is much needed.
And I'm co-sponsor on this, and I agree, and it's been vetted through all the engineering. So, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of seven thirteen nineteen, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
All right. I think that concludes our appropriations, so I think it's appropriate. At this time, we'll take a break. Break for lunch. Try to be back one o'clock. Yeah, we'll adjourn at this time and read adjourn approximately one o'clock. Thank you. We're going recess, I'm sorry. Yeah, and we're headed to the ag center, and we'll meet on the front porch. I'd like to call on Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, from time to time, you just overlook things, and when you make a mistake, you just have to come right out and do that. During the last couple of months, many of you know that Louise Lynch retired from the archives back around the first of February. And so, we went on an exhausted search and called her down and got to a young lady, and she's with us today. And when we were introducing people earlier, it dawned on me I had never introduced her, and her name is Amy Saunders. And Amy, would you stand up in the back if you don't know her? She... There are a whole bunch of things I can say about her. She will take the department and elevate it at a different level than Mrs. Lynch. Ms. Lynch, that is her baby. She birthed it, and she's going to always be protective of it. But Amy comes to us with a degree in, she's an archivist, and I can't even spell that, much less tell you how you get that degree, but she's already making a lot of positive changes down there. We're proud to have her aboard. And Amy, I apologize.
Thank you, Rogers, and Amy, welcome. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, unanimous consent. I'd like to offer the proclamation and the naming of the arena for unanimous consent. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Can we do that by voice vote? We'll do that by voice vote. All in favor of Commissioner Hancock's resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you, John, and it was a very nice event at lunch. Moving on, Resolution seven thirteen twenty, a resolution reallocating revenue from the Williamson County Adequate Facilities Tax Private Act Number one eighteen of the nineteen eighty-seven Private Acts is amended as provided in the Williamson County Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Hawkins? Commissioner Wilson the Second, Tax Study Committee?
Tax Study Committee, five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hawkins?
This is a resolution to move, basically to switch, looks like, well, fire protection, whereas there's a need for more public safety and fire protection facilities in the county as we are growing. There was an agreement among these departments to basically switch. Fire protection is going to take twenty cents out of a dollar in the collection of the adequate facilities tax. And this was by agreement of these departments. And if you look at, if you look at your adequate facilities tax revenue, you need only switch the two numbers, and that's where we're going to end up with fire protection here.
All right.
Beefing up the fire protection.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven thirteen twenty, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen... Oh, okay. Commissioner Bather couldn't be here this afternoon, so he will be absent for the rest of the day. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-one, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation concerning the collection and recycling of waste tires. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes the Second, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This allows the county mayor into a contract for the years two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and two thousand fourteen, fifteen that provides a grant for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars to collect and get rid of waste tires.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hayes?
Just a reminder, as you buy tires, you pay a fee that goes into the state, and then it's reapportioned, part of it to come back to us. This in no way totally takes care of all of our tire expenses, so we do have an additional fee, but this does help with the grant that comes back from the state.
Very good. Any further comment? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven thirteen twenty-one, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-five, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a license agreement with the Guidance Center to provide space at the Williamson County Health Department Facility located in Fairview. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams the Second, Property Committee?
Property Committee, five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, this will allow the Guidance Center, which offers an outpatient mental health service within the Fairview Williamson County Clinic, and this is something that we agree will work. They will operate the scheduling and maintain their records, but this will be a service they can provide out of that clinic.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution seven thirteen twenty-five, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-six, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Brentwood concerning the Williamson County SWAT team. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the Second, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Brentwood Police Department has agreed to put three police officers onto the county SWAT unit, and it's going to be keeping the funding for those, and they will be available for all SWAT team responses within the county. And I applaud the sheriff for working with the City of Brentwood and the police department up there to get this done, and ask for your approval.
Very good. Any questions? If you're in favor of Resolution seven thirteen twenty-six, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Brentwood Emergency Communications District and the Williamson County Emergency Communications District. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the Second, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're working with the Brentwood ECD to be able to provide backup services, and this resolution allows the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Brentwood ECD.
All right. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven thirteen twenty-seven, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into contractual agreement between the State of Tennessee and Williamson County for pass-through federal funding to subsidize emergency management. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the Second, Law Enforcement?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a grant through federal funds through the state who has received this money. They're passing forty-eight thousand, five hundred for us to use for our emergency management.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution seven thirteen twenty-eight, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven thirteen twenty-nine, resolution adopting a pilot policy to provide an insert in the annual county property tax bills that provide the county tax rate and a general breakdown of tax expenditures by major funds. Commissioner Ryan?
Move for approval.
Mr. Barnwell the Second, Tax Study Committee?
Voted against at three, against two, four.
Okay. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee passed it straight to the county commission. There was a second voted on the floor for discussion. After long discussion, the second was withdrawn, therefore, the Budget Committee did not vote.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be as brief as possible with this in terms of the explanation. It's kind of my understanding that unfortunately, this has become fairly politicized, and it is unfortunate because it does take away from the true intent of this resolution, which is to properly educate our taxpayers in terms of where their tax money is going and other facts in terms of what our tax rate is compared to counties around the mid-state. It does denote the fact that we have a triple-A bond rating, and I think you will see from the sample that has been handed out to everybody, this is just a very simple breakdown macro level of what our annual budget is. And then I think you would probably agree that this is, in my opinion, a very positive outlook on our county in terms of not only our budget, our triple-A bond rating, but then also the tax rate. Just some of the specifics, very briefly, this is a one-year pilot. If it is determined that it was unsuccessful, it will not be renewed by this commission. In addition to that, we're anticipating approximately seventy thousand inserts at a cost of approximately fifty-five hundred dollars. There will be no additional postage. It will go in with our annual property tax statements that go out every year by Mr. Davis. So, this is a very economical way for us to be able to educate the general masses in terms of what our budget looks like. We did hear back from Hamilton County, who does a similar program. They did not have an increase of phone calls or emails. I know that was a concern of some, so I find that reassuring as well, that this will be well-accepted by the taxpayers, and I ask for your support, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Danner?
Well, Commissioner Ryan pretty much mentioned this, but I did want to thank our trustee, Joey Davis. I asked him to contact the Hamilton County because they were already doing this, and thank you, Joey, for doing that. And it was interesting to find out they had zero questions. So, I think that alleviates any fear of there being a burden, or at least it wasn't in their county. I think that this idea, I think there's a basic need for information, and this is a basic postcard. It meets that need. I think that if we do get any questions and there becomes a demand, like any private company, if there's a demand for more information, then we would meet that demand, and that we may take another look at it and provide more information. But this is a basic information card. I think that would meet the needs of the folks right now, and I fully support it.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to explain some of the criticisms that have come up. Sometimes when you have a good idea, and I think Commissioner Ryan has good intentions, educating the public is important, giving a snapshot, you know, sounds like a good idea. I just don't believe it's going to work. And the reason that I don't support it is that instead of making things clearer, I think it's going to make things cloudier. So, in the unintended consequence is, instead of giving someone the rate that they're actually paying, if they're in the cities, it's going to give them the rate that you pay in the county. And so, the questions are going to come into the trustee's office, and they can be answered fairly quickly, but time is money. And so, the trustee's office, their job, and they do an amazing job, and so, they collect ninety-nine point something percent of our taxes. They're getting ready and have agreed to do the work for the City of Franklin and the City of Brentwood. In that process, they're already taking on something that is a large responsibility. So, I think the insert, the information should go on the website. Let's be practical. Let's be 21st century. Let's have this information on our website. We can even mention that on the bill that people get for further breakdown of the county budget. Please go to our website. I just think it's, instead of sort of poking the point about the county debt, which apparently, based on these emails I'm getting, is somehow the reason that we want to make this information known. Our county debt is managed. We are a leader in this area in terms of the way we have managed the growth. It's astounding, and I'm proud of that triple-A bond rating. It really is due to people like Mr. Coleman who came back today, Nina, County Mayor Anderson. It's phenomenal. So, my problem is that I think that what we need to do is provide this information on the county website, but not put it in an insert where people are getting their bill, they're comparing it, and they're saying, "Well, why am I not paying the two thirty-one that's the rate?" So, I just don't want to cause confusion and then follow up with questions that can be answered quickly, but it's taken someone's time to sort of make that explanation. And I just think for a growing county, most people can find out what our tax rate is, and they see that it's so much lower than the surrounding counties, and that's a positive. I mean, I want to say that's something that we should toot our horn about, but I just think it ought to be on the website.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Brockman, but I think you've got to start...
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Brockman, but I think you've got to start somewhere, and I think this is a perfect way to start. I think it's information that, in order to be transparent with our population, we should provide for them all the time. I would like to see eventually that we have a very nice website that you go to from the county website, which will explain all these taxes, all the expenditures, and all the other thing, where a person can drill down as far as they want. I think, but you have to start somewhere, and I think this is a good place to start to get people potentially excited about what we do for a living here. And I think a lot of, there's a lot of the things I've heard concern-wise is phone calls and all sorts of other things. And I think what potentially could solve that, for the most part, is at the bottom of this thing, say, "If you have any further questions, please go to our email at taxquestions@williamson-ten.org." And Commissioner Ryan was volunteered to answer them all. So, I mean, I think it's something that, let's get it out there, let the people see it. If they don't care, they don't care. But I think they do care. And I think we should be able to provide it in a more 21st century aspect, but I think this is a good starting point. I think it's money well worth it. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was out last week and did not get to hear the discussion at Budget Committee. I appreciate the comments I've heard today, and I certainly appreciate the idea of transparency in terms of county government. I'm not prepared to support this today. That's not to say I wouldn't at some point in the future, even as early as our next meeting, but I think there's enough questions about it, pro and con, that it's something that perhaps needs further discussion, needs to simmer for a little while.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I had a question for Commissioner Ryan. On the Hamilton County notice that they sent out, did it, I thought I understood that it only had the comparisons of surrounding counties, it did not have the other two areas. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, Commissioner Wilson, but don't quote me on that. I'm trying to pull it up right now.
They had a pie chart.
It had a pie chart.
It had a pie chart.
Just had a pie chart similar where the tax dollars went. But it didn't have the expense part of it. Oh, it had it in the pie. But, second question is, I have also talked around, and we all know it goes for school and growth, and we have been fortunate in the many downturn years, as well as the good years, to be able to meet the needs. The question, I go along with the thinking of Commissioner Brockman, and that is that a lot of people, and I don't mean just people I've talked to, because that's sometimes kind of misleading. I think that the keep-it-simple-kiss method is good. Let's keep it simple. If we could put it on the website at some point and let them see that, I have heard the expense of adding this is far more than $1,500. Now, let's do something simple that we could possibly do, and this is a great start, but I don't know, I'm going to kind of go along with Commissioner Brockman on the idea, and I mentioned that at the budget meeting, the idea is a great idea. I'm not opposed to the idea of being put up where the public can see this at all. So, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Hayes?
There've always been ways for people to find things out. This government has not been a hidden government. Maybe it's a little bit harder than just going to the website or the computer when we didn't have computers, but we've always been open to questions. And many times, we've had department heads and mayor's offices and budget directors and certainly the trustee's office who've answered calls after calls. I certainly want us to be transparent in anything we do and to make it available. I think for those that really want to find out, they can and will, and I say that I would support making it even more so. And I know Trustee Davis has said anytime anybody wanted to know, he would go out of his way to make sure they had the information. And I've directed people to him before, and he's done just that. A concern I have too is how can we put all the valuable information in one insert? The people out in my district, most of them would qualify, or part of them would qualify at the 231. But if they were living in the Franklin Special School District, they would pay a special school district tax. That wouldn't be 231. If they lived in Franklin and didn't live in the special school district, they wouldn't pay that tax. But they also, if they live in Franklin, do not pay a highway tax, do not pay the solid waste tax. So, all of those are different numbers. If they're in one of the Brentwoods, the Nolan'sville, the Fairviews, they don't pay the Fairview tax, so it's a different tax. How can we put all that into the information to make it plain? I agree with Commissioner Brockman. I think it could be more confusing. There may be a way down the road that we can do some vast education, that we can do PowerPoints, that we can get some information with pie graphs online, that we certainly can bring in the trustee to assist us in making it clearer. But I think it could be very confusing because even though it's 231 in the unincorporated Williamson County, we have a lot of county that is not in the unincorporated area, and I think it could be very confusing. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from Mr. Davis. I think we certainly need to give him an opportunity to express himself.
George, you want to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, commissioners. I would be remiss if I didn't stand before you and tell you first off that I have the greatest staff. I'm sure that every elected official, including the county mayor and everybody else, thinks they have the best staff, but I assure you that I do. I've got seven people that work very hard every day. I want to clear up a couple of things. The Hamilton County tax bill I sent you did not have an insert. I thought I made that pretty clear in my email. They had on the bottom right-hand corner their tax rate, and that pie chart there simply explained where that money went to out of that tax rate. It was not an insert. We can handle it. We can do what you want us to do. I'll answer any questions.
Did you have follow-up duty?
No, I just wanted to thank you. But it would be time-consuming, would it not?
I would think so. Obviously, I can't answer that truth because I don't know. I would assume that we'd get a lot of phone calls, but that's okay. We can handle it.
Thank you, Joey. Commissioner Williams?
Call for a question.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, second. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye. Opposed? See how many opposed we got. Hands. One, two, three, four. Is that it? Okay. Question's been called, so we're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 71329, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Seven, yes; 16, no.
Resolution fails. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our agenda for today. I'd like to remind you, we've got the county fair coming up, August 2nd through the 10th. Diane has put some books on there. If there's any contest or anything you want to enter, they're on the cart there, and if there be no further business, I'd move, accept a motion to adjourn. Thank you.